Counselor Salk makes a motion to reconvene Counselor Barnes.
That's what I was gonna do too, so it's fine.
Yeah, I'm done. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, let's head right back in. Thank you, counsel. Alright, let's go to our other business, Second Avenue West Traffic, Counselor Court.
Specifically around the post office. We've had close calls there, maybe not necessarily because how fast they're going, but we've had a couple of old guys almost run over there.
Yes.
I think we really need to look at more signs to slow down the traffic, especially coming out of the west, down that hill. Quite often you'll back up and all of a sudden there's a car right on your butt and you don't even, never even saw it. So I think because of the amount of traffic in there, I think we need to look at some kind of a slower...
Are you wanting to go thirty, like we've done?
I would say that's probably a better option than a lot of places where you've got thirty kilometers an hour ahead, just because of the traffic.
Are you talking in front of the post office?
I'm talking that block. Now that we've got, now that we've got the drugstore there as well, that's extra traffic. And I would like to see us, I'd like, especially coming from the west, like to slow it down to thirty kilometers an hour coming in there.
Let's start about Second Street, which is a hospital street.
Yeah.
And then that way you can come out of that hospital exit.
I mean, at one time that was the place most likely to have an accident was right there. A lot of the older people, that's, they only drive to the post office and they back out really fast or really slow, just hoping they don't get hit.
Counselor Barnes.
I don't know how counsel feels about this, but I really have no problem with speed bumps and I don't know why we don't just put a speed bump right there. Thirty feet from the corner or something, you know. We've got them in the lane way and they're really working.
You don't usually have it on the main road though, do you?
They do and there's other towns that have them, specific areas. I mean, you go into Calgary, South Calgary, every one of those common areas there where there's businesses, they've all got them. They've all got speed bumps through there.
Well, I know they have them in Lesbridge as well.
And they do, yeah.
Speed bumps are usually in the parking lots and those areas. I, my concern would be, are we prepared to take all the traffic claims from people's cars getting smashed on those?
Why would we have claims if they've got a sign ahead saying, "Speed bump"?
Counselor.
Another concern I have there as well, and I've talked to Brad about this, and he's looking at lights, flashing lights similar to what Raymond has.
Yes.
There are a lot of people that use that crosswalk as they're coming off of Moses Lake to come that way. They're either going down Main Street or they're coming down there.
Right.
That's another reason why I'd like to see the traffic slowed down there. And sometimes you can't see them because the cars are parked in the different spots and, yeah, so.
Okay, can I ask a question? Has Brad come up with a potential solution to your issue?
Brad, as far as the flashing lights go, we're talking about the middle of the Main Street crosswalks and maybe the one on Fourth Avenue because it's a blind corner there.
But let's talk about post office, what do you suggest?
He hasn't said much. He has, of course, suggested forty kilometers an hour throughout the whole town. But he hasn't said much else about as far as that particular area. I've talked to him about it, mainly about the crosswalk lights.
Should we maybe refer to administration to have Brad come up with some kind of potential solutions?
He has been looking into that as far as I know.
And then come to counsel and let us know?
Shall we make a recommendation?
I think there could be a recommendation.
Counselor Salk.
Make a recommendation that we have our peace officer look into the traffic issues on Second Avenue West and come back with solutions.
And crossing issue on Main Street?
That too.
Counselor Barnes.
Are you talking about putting a flashing light on the Main Street crosswalk?
Not proposing any solution.
No, I know that, I'm just saying, is that what the discussion is about?
That's been the suggestion that he and I have talked about.
Because if you recall, about three years ago, we were talking about doing some stuff with the crosswalks. And then the province came back to us and said, "You already have one more than you're supposed to have. We'll take it away from you if you push it."
We're not pushing anything, we're just making the warning signs, lights.
No, I am just saying, to make that an official crosswalk, you might care, you gotta be careful about that one.
I guess that's something Brad can look into.
Yeah.
We've got a motion on the table. Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Thank you. Alright, now we will go to C. This one is Brownfield property discussion, further discussion on this item. This was, we brought back to Jeff after we went to Brownlee and Associates' conference that we went to. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just pulling this up real quick. I just want a couple things from counsel. So, I've been doing a little reading into Brownfields. AUMA has a great website for resources on Brownfields. And I'm, we're all aware, I think we can actually have this conversation without mentioning any individual properties, but we're all aware of properties of concern. And in many cases, I feel like the Brownfield as it's written is a bit trying to push a square pagan around hole here, that it's not... The regulation is a little ambiguous because it, the definition really is those that are contaminated sites. Now contamination can be a number of things. I wanted a little bit of feeling from the group of, when we think of, and I think we all think of some of the same properties. Is it the intent that we want to look at an incentive in which to promote the redevelopment of the property, that's one way to look at it? Or frankly, there's probably a better word, but a penalty type incentive to promote, get rid of the building? Right? There's a couple ways it can be looked at, and things would be structured very differently depending on what it is. One of the issues with, let's call it a tax incentive, you designate it as a Brownfield property, you give a tax incentive. That's that much less financial burden the person has on that property just to leave it sitting status quo. You've just, you've minimized their expenses on it. Now, it should be under some form of agreement. It should be under some kind of, you know, give and take by both parties. But I just want to get a bit of a feel on the direction we may want to pursue on individual properties here. And I think this was a Counselor Salk item, so.
Right, Counselor Salk.
I think the intent behind this, Jeff, was probably more directed to your second point. We want to make some kind of movement on the properties to make them more sightly. The Brownfield thing, I mean, we did ask specifically about that at the Brownlee conference. Does it have to be just an empty space? And they said, "No." Can it be a building? Yeah. Can it be contaminated with asbestos? Yeah. So that it does qualify in a Brownfield, but I don't know, and I get what you're saying, and I think, yeah, we probably have some concerns about providing tax incentives unless there is some solid parameters about specifically doing some improvements. Otherwise, we just want to improve the property in whatever way we can possibly incentivize the person to do it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I hear you. And that's when I was going through this, I thought, okay, you can look at this a couple different ways. And if you have a will, I mean, if you have a willing owner of land that comes to the town and says, "Here's my plan, and if I had some concession for four years and this would make this make sense", well, that's something to look at. Because now you have a willing owner, a willing site owner. I'm not sure in some of our problem areas we do. And part of it, one of the issues, one of the criticisms of, well, it's not a criticism, it's one of the realities of Brownfield redevelopment is the reclamation almost always outweighs the resale or the residual value of the property. You know, you spend $300,000 on a property to have a property worth $75,000. Those are some of the big concerns in Brownfield.
Mayor.
There is also looking at the AUMA write-up. It seems to be that you need to have on your site Alberta Health Services and the Alberta Environment Ministries involved. And I'm, in order to review whatever application it is for the redevelopment of a Brownfield. So it's not exactly a small process.
Yeah. One other thing I came across, I want to say it was Mayerthorpe, but I might be wrong. When you look at Brownfield redevelopment strategies, they're largely contained to the big centers in the province.
Right.
So like the big five are doing most of them, right? Small towns don't have a ton of major Brownfield, but there's a couple of towns, Oketoks, that's still a town, but it's a pretty big town, and Mayerthorpe, that are offering some grant from the municipality to persuade the owner to at least do the environmental impact assessment.
Right.
So a lot of times I think why they're doing that is you have owners saying, "I actually don't know the extent of what I've got here." Like, "I probably have a wreck on my hands here, but I don't know, do I have asbestos? Do I have ground contamination? Do I have, you know, do I have lead? Do I have a number of contaminants that they're concerned about?" So the town of, I believe it was Mayerthorpe in some of the case studies was saying, "Okay, we'll give $1,500 for anyone that will do an environmental impact assessment, provided we get the results of it as well."
Right.
And then we know what we're collectively dealing with here. So I thought, you know, that's, that's an interesting way to look at it and not terribly onerous financially if we simply want to get a good idea of what it is we're dealing with. Because we all know that to say, "Hey, fix up this building" and then find out it's asbestos from top to bottom, it isn't just about putting a coat of paint on the walls anymore.
Counselor Salk.
Yeah, with asbestos contamination, I think you can safely say, as long as you're not disturbing it.
Yeah, if it's dormant, it's fine.
I think, and maybe I'm misrepresenting, maybe this is just my own thought, but I was looking at some way to incentivize property owners on Main Street to at least put some lipstick on those pigs. So that they don't look so...
They're grippid.
Yes.
So in the closed session here in a minute, we're going to have a talk about some specific properties that we want to prioritize for unsightly premises. And the reason I want to talk to you about it is because we anticipate some political pushback to, well, pushback from those owners to counsel, to the politicians. And many of those are on Main Street. So we could talk about it from an unsightly perspective and see where that gets us. But like I said, there are a number of tools here that we could look at. There are some very interesting tools. There's not a lot of case study for small communities in Brownfield. It's pretty limited. But things like an environmental impact assessment do give you at least some data if you have a willing owner.
Yeah.
Because sometimes ignorance is bliss.
Counselor Salk.
I'd suggest that we just then move ahead because it was thrown out there as a suggestion just because we heard that it was a possibility. But if we can, if we can look at other avenues, then let's do that.
Sure.
Just wanted to throw something out. We do have an example of a remediation of a Brownfield was that Fast Gas property. I mean, that cost mega bucks to do that. I mean, it was full of gasoline and it was...
Across the road.
And it was moving through the, and, and in behind the Royal Bank there. So fortunately, you know, the company wanted that property in that location, so they, they paid for that. And that was, I heard it was a million dollars plus.
Well, in the early 2000s, and I know this because my family was directly involved in one from the old service center on Highway Five. The province came out with a fuel remediation program. And a number of properties in Cardston took advantage of it at the time, including my family.
Your grandparents.
Because I was knee deep in a hole at 2:00 AM pumping water out of it so they could come do the remediation. So I intimately aware of that little program. But, so, so many of our properties in Cardston were done under that program fifteen years ago or so. Yeah, for sure.
The KFC was not done about that time.
Yeah, that's when the car wash was on it.
So are we okay with leaving it with Jeff?
And let's talk in the closed session on some specifics.
Okay, let's move along. So, we're going to talk about our business arising from the delegations. Let's start with the very first one. So Mrs. Cara Baldwin and her students in regards to, in regards to this amazing project memorial that they have in mind. Let's, Counselor, or Mayor, go ahead.
I really would like to see counsel supporting the project. The location of the project might be a problem. And I really think that maybe administration would need to go back to Cara Baldwin and see if the elder that was there could give us a priority list explaining why we need a second choice because of potential flooding. The other thing that I really would like to see regarding this project is pursuing the possibility of grant wherever we can go, be it the Indigenous Ministry, be it the community foundation, their special project funding, which gives substantial, large amount of money. I've seen $20,000 given under that project. So, and then I think we also need to keep in touch with the school board to try to see what they intend to pitch in financially. And then I think that will give us a better idea where to go financially to support the project and to make sure that Cara, Cara keep us abreast of what Ramona is doing with the fundraising. To try to understand where our contribution could be. I mean, I could see a contribution by the town, eight to $10,000, but that's just me. I think if we are looking for truth and reconciliation, that's a physical demonstration of that aspect. And I think wouldn't do our town no harm to try to go towards the path of reconciliation. We went, we went with Jeff, was it with you that I went to standoff? No, you were not there. Who was with me?
Was that Bill Peewoy?
No, it, there was someone of the counties that went with me, Tom Nash. And we were, and, yeah, Sharon Jensen of the Rotary. And we went there and had a chance to speak to past chief Charlie Whistlehead. And he said something that was very interesting that was regarding the hospital. We were talking regarding that, that aspect. And he said something very profound to me. The fact that we were there, sitting with them, was already the path of truth and reconciliation. And I thought, wow. So without having engaged officially in that path, those are the steps that I recognize as being very significant. So I think that would be simply another significant fact towards the same.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, did you, you'd said you'd had your hand up?
Counselor, I just want to throw something out. I've had some thoughts on the go-forward on this. And I, I'll tell you right now, I really like this project. From an administrative point of view, from all the things that we've talked about collectively trying to do, I think it's great. I am, I have a preference of location, and it isn't there, but I respect why that could work. But here's, here's what I want to throw out, simply because I have a bit of a, I'd like to see this move forward. And I've been thinking about the role of the town in this. And I'm wondering, I know when we met with the school board and the teachers, they would like the town to be the one where the funds come to. They would like to put the town's face on, "This is a town project with participation from." They feel that has the most social credit in the community if we're really using this as a tool for healing. That that's an advantage. So here's what I'll throw out from an administrative point of view that hopefully I can assign Jill to do tomorrow. No, I'm just kidding, Jill. Maybe I'm not kidding, but we'll talk about that tomorrow. What I'm wondering is if we put a small document together, a little paper to Cara saying, and first of all, "We as a town engage indigenous relations at the provincial level", and ask them, "Here's the project. Where can you direct us? What can we do?" We put a resource page together, community foundations, SIP, a number of these types of things. Perhaps the same grant we used for the Senataf, that same type of idea.
That idea, yeah.
Multicultural.
Yeah, and so we do, we spend a little bit of time exploring resources. And then we put together the pros and cons of town-owned locations. And again, I respect that the elder's gone out and given a preference. I do, and if we can make it work, I'm keen. But I want to make sure it's the right location long-term. I want it to be a place that we can monitor for safety and caretaking of the, of the monument. It's something I want to make sure that it's in the right spot for educating our residents and accessible and all those things. So I'd be prepared to put a little document together, a resource paper or something. And then we have a meeting on the 21st with Cara again, and the school board, and Ramona, and some others. So I'll throw that out there as if the council's comfortable with us committing ourselves to that point. And like Counselor Salk mentioned, we have the long-term perpetual care of this thing too.
Yes.
And that's what we'd be committing to. So we have to balance that with the financial piece as well. So I just want to throw that out from my point of view, what I'd be prepared to do there for them.
Counselor Court.
I think Jeff covered a lot as far as Cara has no idea on how to raise the money. She's told me that several times.
Absolutely.
I also talked to her just, I think it was yesterday, whenever. There had been a suggestion on the corner here if we're looking for an alternate spot. But she also made a comment that I thought was kind of interesting, and we want it by a creek or by a river because that's important to them. And she suggested that maybe the Feyre Fountain, is that under consideration, being moved or taken apart or?
Which?
The Feyre Fountain. And she thought maybe right there. Now, I don't know, just an idea. It's by the, by the creek, it's not going to flood up there.
Discussed at length with the big group. And I proposed something, and it's not to suggest I was right here, but I just threw out something to consider. I don't see this as a tourist attraction.
No.
And it's not because I don't think there's interest, because I don't think that should be the intent of it. I think this is a tool for the community to engage with each other and to learn from each other and to start that reconciliation effort. And my recommendation was to put it here on the grounds next to the Senataf.
That's what I was thinking.
Because, one, we can monitor it from here, we can make sure it's being, you know, respected and cared for, and we treat it roughly the same. And I thought it would fit well there. Now, I understand if that doesn't work, and that's actually one of the reasons Blaine Jensen came, because he would be way too excited if it could also be here as well. But I understand there's some other elements that they want to be represented on the site. And so we may have to be open to looking at some alternatives.
Counselor.
I guess we're talking, so I'd be a little concerned if it was right next to Senataf, because it takes away from the Senataf. I would, it takes away from that as well. I would have no problem with it right over here on the corner by the, I talked to Cara about that as well. She thought that would be right here.
The museum lot?
Yeah. And she thought that might, but she's actually going to suggest that as well. But again, if they're looking for a spot that's close to the river because of the, because of the massacre in Montana, that Feyre Fountain spot.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, we, we did discuss that. My, like I said, my only concern was I don't, I don't think its intent is to be something that catches a lot of through traffic.
So you don't want it on Main Street then?
Well, again, I'm open to whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a big parking lot right there.
Counselor Bengry.
Jeff, how much room have we got between the sidewalk going into the museum and this building?
I don't know, twenty feet? I don't know, eighteen, fifteen feet, something like that.
Mayor.
Let's address something. It's very important that the elder be involved here. The elder goes through with a feeling of the spirit, and we have to respect that.
So if, Counselor Barnes.
I really think that that spot down there by the river is an ideal location. It's been probably fifteen years or more since that parking area got flooded over. And I don't know why that is, but, but anyways, I really think if you look at that site there, I think there might be a way we can work it.
And building up land doesn't turn it complicated.
I was gonna say, if we could build it up and berm it up, we could make, we do that, have some steps up to it, make it look really nice.
Counselor Salk.
That's the question, Jeff. With our electrical vehicle, charging station, that was one of the sites.
Yeah, it isn't the one that made to the final cut.
Okay, so where is that?
So, well, there's two. One is outside the tourist information center, so just west of that, and the other is in the northeast corner of Family Foods.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just on the south side of the bridge. So that it has high exposure right there. That they would install it on the town boulevard. And then do a license of occupation with the owners of the property to have two stalls there.
And how quickly is that?
I'm not sure the timeline. I know they're starting to roll this out here.
Mayor.
They charge for charging?
Yes, they do.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Now, just to give you an idea, when she said $75,000, that is if the top portion is a bronze statue. If they go to granite, which I can also do, it'd be significantly less expensive.
There's also a local artist who's being approached about doing the bronze just for the costs.
Right.
Which would be pretty neat. You know, when I think about that site down there, and I have, I've tried to kind of look at this. That site does offer the opportunity to have almost a bit of a First Nation area. To expand that over time, to include other things, other interpretation, other education.
And something else that I think about is the foot traffic from the junior high kids that will walk past it every single day, coming and going. How cool is that? Right? They're the ones reading the history and talking about it, and I just see that as a really good thing. So let's, let's do this. Let's do a straw poll going around the table on support for this. So let's start here. Support, support, support. Absolutely. Support, support. So could we make a recommendation to, thank you?
I'd make a recommendation that we direct administration to put together an information package regarding this project and also to seek out grants as part of that package.
Sounds good.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Salk.
Awesome.
Okay, so moving right along, we've got Mr. Blaine Jensen's request, and his request was in regards to the $500 to put towards, that they would put 500, the county would put 500, and so forth. And he was wanting our financial support for that handrail. Mayor.
I would put a recommendation that we support the ask, the asking of $500 towards improving the access to the museum by way of a handrail ironwork.
Questions? All in favor?
Counselor Brown, I'll actually try and account for that before we bring you the new rules by law next week.
Okay, yeah.
I'll see what they do about having to affect the bylaw.
Yes, okay, sounds good, thank you. Alright, no line card. Now, were we gonna, where were we gonna go with that?
So, I don't want to, I don't want to skim over anything, but all the legislative changes? Frankly, you're not going to push back on those very much. They just are what they are.
They're, they have to change.
So we go ahead and draft it with all the legislative changes, fine. We got a pretty good feel for CCANs, although there was a little bit of debate maybe still to happen there. But we got a pretty good feel that that can stay status quo, at least in draft one. You know, at least for first reading.
Yeah.
And then I think you, we need a little direction on the setbacks. And then there'll be more information coming on home occupations over the next couple of weeks. So, and we are in, there is, there is no sensitive timeframe here. We're fine to work through this.
Counselor Bengry.
Well, I'd make a recommendation, we stay with the 40-foot triangle.
So although it sounds counterintuitive, normally the 40-foot from the curb is a shorter, it's a less intrusive distance than the 25-foot from the property line.
Right.
So when you're looking at the closer and the farther line?
Yeah.
The farther line's the 25-foot. The closer one is the 40, to the curb, when I say closer.
Right. Mayor.
I just wonder regarding the CCAN application, I know there was one...
I think we're dealing with this other thing first, aren't we?
We had a recommendation. He made a recommendation.
We have a recommendation here.
You want to do this, but I still want to talk about the content of this.
Should we do them separate or together?
What was your recommendation, Ian, Counselor?
That we maintain the 40-foot.
Oh, okay, so...
It's already written.
Why don't you just have some general discussion? Let's not do a motion on it, and we'll bring back the draft with what we talk about here tonight.
Okay.
So 40-foot, sounds like we're going to have a little more discussion on CCAN.
Yes.
Home occupation... Home occupation's still coming up. All legislated stuff is drafted.
I'll, I'll tell you what to do.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
So, here, here is my question regarding a timeline about the change of this legislation. It seems to me that Nolan says that if a person is living on a residential area that has agricultural land, if that person wanted to change the designation, that should be done before this legis, this legislation is adopted. Am I correct?
Uh, so my understanding is sort of. So the fee to, what I mean is, there is a fee to request a zoning change.
Right.
Um, and that is simply because it takes a lot of time to do one. You give public notice, you have public hearings, you have a number of council meetings on it. So I'm not, I don't know that that changes whether or not you have an open draft of the bylaw or not. I know, I'm not sure that's, uh, reasonable to waive.
He mentioned, he says the opportunity is now. Once this is adopted, it's over.
Well, bylaws are never over by their nature. They sit at the discretion of the council.
I was trying to understand what he was trying to tell me.
Yeah, I think he's just meaning this is a big bylaw, that you must do public hearings, you must do mandatory advertising. So the process is much more streamlined if you do everything when it's open.
Okay.
But it's, I don't want it interpreted that you do not have discretion to change it every other week if that's what you feel like you should do.
So that person that came and saw you today?
Correct.
That is trying to understand what could be done. That person could be, uh, directed as to a potential change of designation if they're someone to spend their $500.
Yes.
Okay, so is that something that you will approach that person to?
Yeah, I told my phone tomorrow.
Fine, thank you. That's all what I needed to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to what Counselor Bangery had to say. I think it's important that we, that we have some safety factors. And I think Counselor Bangery's suggestion will make those corners a lot safer.
But would that make it safer?
Well, I think so. I think that they, they'll have to take those trees and, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna use.
The opposite.
Hold on a second. I want to use that example that he used in here of the former Jensen property. I owned the property next door to them, and I just sold it. So I come out of my driveway, and he's got that tree right there. I couldn't see anybody, and I just about got hit. So I, I, I went to him and I said, you know what? We've got a problem here. You've got all these trees on your boulevard, and it's, it's, it's a safety hazard there. And he said, well, what's your suggestion? I said, well, I'm not saying I want you to cut it down, but I want you to make it so it's visible. So he cut everything up so that the, the distance of a vehicle, he cut it all the way, all those branches up so he could see. And maybe that's how we can solve this issue with the setback with the 50 or the 40 or the 25. Because the, those trees are, they're beautiful trees, but they're full, and you cannot see going by them either at 25 or 40.
Did not, didn't Nolan not suggest that we stay with the 40?
Yep.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, but.
Mayor?
Am I misunderstanding something?
Maybe.
Is it 25?
Clears it more.
Clears it a lot more than a 40.
There's your picture right there.
I'm trying to figure that out. That's on your picture. Yeah.
The 40-foot is from the center of the curb.
Right.
So it's opposite what you think.
25-foot is from the property.
Property.
Correct.
Many streets have significant boulevards.
Right.
So 25 feet at that corner would give all the visibility that you're looking for.
Here's the tree he was worried about right there.
Yeah, but that's different.
Because I've drove in and out of that parking lot for 10 years.
You're talking about this tree.
So the 40 feet does not give you the safety you're looking for.
25 does.
And these ones are bad, too. They're really bad.
So you want 25 feet at that corner?
You want to go 25 so that you wouldn't have these in any way.
Well, my question, though, is why would Nolan, who's our development officer, why would he be suggesting that we stay with the 40 feet?
Okay, well, I'll tell you though.
You know, that's what I want to know.
Mayor?
If you heard what he said, he said he didn't feel that 40 feet impeded the traffic or the safety for the people driving there. I'm not sure that I agree with him.
Uh-huh.
He also said with the 25 feet, that takes a lot of your property where you can't plant trees and stuff like that. So he was worried about how much property we're going to be not allowing them to have.
It takes a greater triangle out.
Cuts a swath right across.
Right, if it's a 25. So he would have to remove both these trees.
Exactly. At 25 feet, he needs to remove another two trees.
I tried to get the former owner to move those years ago, and he wouldn't.
Okay.
So do we understand?
Yeah, I understand now.
Would you want to remove them?
Nope.
If it was your property?
I would not want to.
Hell, no.
But I would definitely trim them to make it, make it so that it's not as dangerous. And then, and he did it on that one tree on the west side of the driveway, and I appreciated that.
Counselor Court.
Yeah, so if we go with the 25 feet, are we going to have a whole bunch of people having to cut down trees everywhere?
That's right.
Yeah.
But, but what is it that you're looking after? Is that safety that you're always talking about, or is it the tree? The tree is not going to save a life.
I also think 40 feet gives, still gives you enough room to see what's going on.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, I have gone through that column many times. You have to be careful.
Yep.
You do the stop, and you roll, roll forward with caution. And then you find, and I agree with Nolan at, with his comment. 40 feet is safe if you follow the proper way of driving your car.
Yeah, which most people don't.
Another comment.
Go ahead.
It doesn't matter whether you have trees or not. There are people who drive and are not very careful when they come to a yield. And I know with my personal vehicle, where I live on my corner, I have come to that yield many times, and I've had to look around because I have a blind spot. And I've just about hit an RCMP, and I just about hit another guy. And so I'm really careful on that corner. But that is one of the most dangerous corners in town. There have been more accidents and serious people, people getting seriously hurt at that United Church corner. And there's no obstructions there. People can see fine.
So what's the?
But it's carelessness. So what I'm just saying, if we leave it at the 40 feet, the status quo, people just need to be careful. And it doesn't matter where you are, whether you have trees or not.
But the moral of the story is.
Have you just school for, for people coming up to the sides or hearing you?
So the moral of the story here, though, is we, we cannot put a billion laws in place for the idiot drivers, right? I mean, we can't.
That's right.
That's not, that's not our job.
That's right.
So it is our job if we can make these small changes so that we can be allowed to see better. That's what it's about. It's about keeping the members of Kerstin and the area safe. So let's move on. So as far as that goes, are we going to direct administration to proceed with this? Where, go ahead, Counselor Bangery.
What are we going to do on Third Avenue East at the top of the hill?
So what about it?
You've got, you've got, you've got interference from, from the old Seth Nelson home.
Yeah.
And also on the other corner, are you going to have them cut all those trees down and, and take everything out of there? I mean, well, if we're looking for safety, and that's on a hill.
But this is what I mean. The 40 feet recess, it's all right as long as people drive with caution.
Well, we can't, we cannot decide how they're going to drive.
So let's keep it the way it is and move on.
So let's leave it at 40 feet.
Good, okay. Sounds good. That's a great idea.
Well, go back to 40 feet, sorry.
Correct, what it previously was.
Yep.
Anything else from us you need, Jeff? On this?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Now let's talk in regards to Mr. Delbert Beazer, um, his idea of bringing the association back. I mean, there is already one. It would just be bringing this one back to life. Is there anyone, any questions on this?
So I just have.
Counselor Drew.
Sorry, I just have a couple of questions. So with our, we don't have an association right now. We just have a board, right?
Correct.
So is there any advantages for us to have a nonprofit association, other than getting grants?
My understanding is raising the money.
Yeah, it's raising the money.
It's raising the money. It keeps it at an arms' distance from us, which I see as a good thing. Counselor Barnes?
I love the idea of having somebody do the fundraising that's willing to do it. And especially when they're not asking for any authority.
Agreed.
Right? I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Anybody else?
For power to him.
Counselor Selk.
You need a recommendation for us?
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Then I would recommend that we approve the.
Mr. Beazer.
Friends of the golf course. He's suggesting that we have a golf association.
For the purpose of fundraising.
Fundraising for the clubhouse or the golf course, however you want to put it.
For the sole purpose at this time.
Right.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, number eight. Uh, this will go to Counselor Bangery in regards to MPC, please.
No, no.
Or not?
Jeff, all I want to know is what is, what is our policy for, for flowers, for bereavement?
Oh, okay.
Uh, what kind of money do we spend on it? And?
So there isn't any formal policy on it, except for, I believe, if it's a counselor or spouse of a former counselor. Does that sound right, Jill?
That's what we've been doing.
Let's see, I think that's been the practice. And then when it comes to staff, it isn't in stone, except the association has some policy that they follow. So they'll, for example, when my grandmother died, the association gave me a gift card to buy a tree in memoriam. So the association does things for family. They have defined, these members of your family, then they buy a gift for that person. So we've seen that recently with Leonard, or Bart, or folks like that who have had immediate family pass away.
Is there a dollar value put onto that?
Well, I think they usually do.
$60, $20.
Yeah.
Up to 50, $50?
Bucks, yeah.
Okay, then my question to Counselor Drew, because he's in that business, and.
Computers?
Yeah, I'm an IT guy.
And I know he's got to be careful to answer this and how he's going to answer it. And maybe I shouldn't even present it, but is $60 a nice enough bouquet?
Tell him it's got to be $200 or nothing.
No, I wouldn't say that.
We had this discussion, Counsel Drew, you and I.
Yeah. While back. I think previously there, there were some things that were, were ordered that were quite small.
Mickey Mouse.
And that $60 amount will get you something.
Something nice.
So various was.
Yeah, or. But we saw the Skoyan flowers, and they were all very appropriate.
Perfect.
That answers it. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Was there anything else under questions? Are we good? Okay, nine, correspondence. So the first one we'll go to is the A U M A.
45 bucks.
Uh, education requisition form. Jeff, I think that was just in regards.
It's happened to come in timely with the legend.
Perfect. Okay, so the next one is B, Blood Tribe Land Management, and that was an invitation to an event. Go ahead, Mayor.
Jeff, in the past, we always were involved with part of the Moses Lake cleanup. This sprung on us a little bit quick here. Did, did Moses Lake Committee kind of contacted you regarding their needs or?
This was dropped off from lands. I didn't speak to anybody about it.
So it's a little bit of a problem for us again, because here again, we, we fully advise as to what is required. And the community is not advised. And so here, what do we do?
Good question.
Right.
My thought is that we promote the event on our media and encourage people to, to go out and participate.
But except we need to tell them where they need to go?
That's this Saturday, isn't it?
Yeah, but it doesn't really tell you much.
How much involvement do they want for equipment and stuff like that?
We don't know.
So, so this isn't the same as, uh, the other cleanup just happened this previous weekend, the one the town usually is involved in, that has happened. So this isn't that same community cleanup.
So this is the.
What is it?
This is the Community Cleanup Day in Moses Lake, Saturday, May 11th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. Meeting place at the gym. So at the gym at Moses Lake, please dress accordingly. If you have any yard equipment to help with the cleanup, we would appreciate any assistance. Drinks and lunch will be available. So if you have any questions, you're supposed to contact the Blood Tribe Management. And then there's a contact phone number.
So could we at least put that on our site, on our website?
Yeah, so that, there's been that evolution. Remember a few years ago, the community cleanup stuck to the highways and the ditches?
Right. Now they're doing the whole community.
So Lands is now saying, well, we'll do something internal to the community, which I think is great. But they've taken it on, right? That's.
Which is what we used to do. We used to go with our semi-loaders and pick up all the waste and garbage.
But there became an issue with the way people were being treated at, so I need to no longer go into Moses Lake.
Yep, so stick to the highways and the corridors now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I have no problem promoting the event. I just wanted council to be aware of it, that it was going on as we received the invitation on Friday.
Perfect.
So.
Awesome. Thank you. Sounds good. All right, so I think that's all as far as our committee of the whole meeting goes for today. Um, we will be going in closed session for FOIP in regards to ICF meeting update. So that's going to be in closed session. So can I have a sign?
A motion before you do that. You're going to go past your 8 o'clock and requiring a motion to extend. Do you mind making a motion to extend now?
Okay.
Because we'll be in closed session.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
Extend to 8:30.
Okay, Counselor Bangery.
No, all in favor?
All in favor?
We have to go in closed session.
To go in, in closed session.
Counselor Bangery, make a motion to go in closed session. Thank you. All in favor?